This o'clock, I will call the December twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order. This evening, we have Pastor Richie Johnson from the First Church of Withfield to provide the invocation. If you would, please stand and remain standing for the pledge.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Congratulations on your new sign-ins and swearing in. So I have before you. But if everybody bowed their head and closed their eyes, Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for your goodness and your mercy. I pray that you would be with our county. I pray that you would be with our leaders, guide them in righteous decisions, guide them in righteous choices and judgments, and bless our citizens and let your hand continue to be on With County. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We do have a forum tonight. Ms. Lawson unfortunately is under the weather. She could not attend. The first item on our agenda is we have recognition of some retirees. And our first retiree is Mrs. Pam Fisher. Pam, you'll come up?
On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, it's my honor to present you this plaque in appreciation of your seventeen and a half years of service to the With County citizens at the With County Treasurer's Office from two thousand and six to two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you.
And we have Ms. Kathy Voss. You're not, you're not, you're not a retiree yet.
Two days.
I think you're still in the lineup. You just need a little go back.
Two days.
Present to Ms. Kathy Voss in appreciation of eighteen years of service, two thousand and six to two thousand and twenty-three, at the With County Commissioner of Revenue's Office, and as With County Commissioner of Revenue. Kathy, it's been an absolute pleasure.
It's been my pleasure. I've enjoyed every minute of it. Well, maybe not every minute, but.
We can, you know, we record the same. We can do like the highlight reel. But honestly, Kathy, it's.
Thank you.
Dave Merritt. Which is not thriving for a beer. In appreciation of your twenty-one years of service from two thousand and two to two thousand and twenty-three in the With County Sheriff's Office, and as With County Commissioner of Revenue, Kathy, it's been an absolute pleasure.
It's been my pleasure. It's always been. I've enjoyed every minute of it. Well, maybe not every minute, but.
We, we can, you know, we record the same. We can do like the highlight reel. But honestly, Kathy, it's.
Thank you.
Dave Merritt. Which is not thriving for a beer. In appreciation of your twenty-one years of service from two thousand and two to two thousand and twenty-three in the With County Sheriff's Office, my honor presents you this plaque in your total years of service, because you had time in Montgomery County, is, well, I have twenty-five years, twenty-eight years. Thank you, sir. In appreciation of your twenty-six years of service, nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand and twenty-three, to the With County Sheriff's Office, all the deputies, staff, and citizens.
I love that one. I do, and this is awesome.
I hate change, and the, there's never been a place I've seen with county go hungry without candy, without chewing gum, because of this lady right here. And it's, we couldn't do a resolution to talk about everything that Esther has done, not only for the employees, but the citizens of the county, and Esther's great remiss. Congratulations. I didn't think you'd ever retire. But I hope you enjoy it.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is Resolution Honoring Supervisor BG Jean Horni Jr.
I'll have to come up here.
Yes, you do.
I debated whether to jump across the counter, but I figured I'd probably end up on my face.
Jean's been around so long, when he started, I didn't have to worry.
Now, wait a minute. Everybody else is longer than me.
Huh?
Everybody else is, not even longer than me.
It's the quality. And the quality. With County Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash thirty-seven, the Resolution Honoring BG Jean Horni Jr. Whereas on November the sixth, two thousand and seven, Jean Horni Jr. was elected by the citizens of the Spiegel District to serve as their representative on the With County Board of Supervisors and began serving on January the first, two thousand and eight. And whereas, Jean Horni served as a dedicated member of the Board of Supervisors for four consecutive four-year term.
So you got two more.
Whereas he devoted countless hours to serving on various committees and authorities, including the New River Regional Water Authority, the Withland Joint Public Service Authority, the Water and Wastewater Committee, the Town and County Committee for Retreat, and liaisoned several constitutional officers. And whereas, he was actively involved in promoting funding for fire departments and rescue squads, capital improvements, and operational needs, supporting school capital improvements, providing funding for the Appalachian Regional Exposition Center, and extending public water to the unserved areas of With County. Now therefore, be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors assembled in regular session on this twenty-seventh day of December, two thousand and twenty-three, does hereby express its appreciation on behalf of the citizens of With County to this distinguished Gene McPherson, job well done, and thus convey its best wishes to him and his family for continued success, happiness, and good health. And be it further resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors does hereby grant that this resolution be incorporated in the official minutes of this board, and that a framed copy be given to Jean Horni as a token of their high regard adopted this twenty-seventh day of December, two thousand and twenty-three, signed Brian W. Devolvo Chartered. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash thirty-seven.
Same move.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Jean, it's, it's absolutely been a pleasure. By the time I've spent with you, you know, the Bible tells us that for everything, there's a season, and there's nobody in this room that knows that more than you, because you feed your family, my family, our family based on seasons. And the dedication to this board on top of your family life, your farming life, is, is just been amazing. You've always been a, a voice of common sense. You've always been a voice for our farmers in With County, and for that, I say thank you. Now, with that being said, we wanted to get you a gift. We wanted to get you a watch, but we searched and we could not find one that operated on Horni. So you told me one time that you'd love to have a pair of them boots, but they were too expensive for you, which I know was a lie, myself and the other board members.
Well, thank you.
And you didn't get a gift bag.
I got a gift bag.
And there's some rubber thing. I'm not sure what that does. But Jean, thank you.
Thank you, sir. It's been a pleasure. It's, I was trying to think how I had a phrase now. It's been real. It's been fun. And actually, some of it's been real fun. Thank y'all. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jean.
Appreciate you serving and following you. We've had a lot of fun. Followed you, too.
And we'll pose a little good picture. Now, Elizabeth, I don't know how good you are with the IT side, but at the end of the meeting, if you don't play the cowboy role, it's way for Jean. No pressure. That's another. And more importantly, Leah, thank you. Sharon, I don't know what you're gonna do now that you get a bag.
That's what I thought you was gonna say, was that you considered her condolences. But that's it.
We'll move on with citizens' time. I don't think we have anybody signed up for the regular citizens' time, so we'll close citizens' time, and we will move on to a public hearing to discuss vacating a Clark Avenue right of way. And Mr. Bear, if you don't mind, I have talked enough. If you read.
Not a problem, sir. In compliance with section fifteen point two twenty-two oh four of the Code of Virginian amendments, there too, the With County Board of Supervisors will conduct a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance for the vacation of right of ways and streets entitled Ordinance Vacating a Portion of Clark Avenue Seventy-Foot Wide Right-of-Way for Lot One, where the house is situated, of the town of Max Meadows subdivision located in the Fort Chisel Magisterra District of With County, Virginia. The Board of Supervisors will hear comments from the citizens regarding the adoption of the proposed ordinance. The public hearing will be held on Wednesday, December twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, at six P. M. in the boardroom of the With County Administration Building, three forty South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia. Copy of the proposed ordinance is on file in the County Administrator's Office located at three forty South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia, and online at www.withco.org for the public to review.
All right. With that being said, I'll open the public hearing portion of the vacation. We have one person signed up, and Mr. Rocky, is it Billbury? Come on up, sir. As always, on a public hearing, you'll be given five minutes, so.
Well, I wasn't planning on saying anything, but I just wanted to say that, you know, I'm in favor of it, but the property used to belong to my father, now it belongs to me and my siblings. And even though the property's been in our family since the eighteen hundreds, we don't have any family left, so, in this area, we're gonna kind of have to sell it. And this is one of the things that has to be done before we're gonna be able to let the property go.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Billbury. I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Mr. Bear, do you have anything to add or staff? I know we've got some communication from Ms. Shelton.
Um, no. Well, the only thing I will add, we, we did share with you the letter that was received from one other landowner there that had concerns. Ms. Shelton has worked with, with the family and the, I guess, realtor and the subdivider in coming up with an option. Originally, they had looked at vacating that entire right of way down through there, that cut off access for a residence there that had access to VDOT right of way. They worked with VDOT. They were able to determine, while it is a seventy-foot wide right of way across there, VDOT does not claim any of the full seventy feet. VDOT will still keep a right of way through there. It's generally forty foot in width. It goes by this property and then dead ends south of this property. So it is just that rectangular portion of property that is being vacated in the ordinance.
Um, one question I had with the, with the letter that we received, the letter talked about a home at one forty-one Clark Avenue that at some point was found to be, I guess, partially on the right of way, and that they had to, I assume, jack the house up and move it. Do you know how long ago that's been?
I am not familiar of that, so I, not to say that it hadn't happened in the last twenty-three years, but I was not familiar with that situation.
And, and I guess that was my, I mean, it looks like, and, and I don't know, it, it looks to me like we're trying to fix a problem that's been there for a while, and I don't know why that particular parcel of land wasn't fixed this way instead of them having to pay somebody to move the house. It was, I know it was before my time, and it was before Jean's time, which we just discussed has been a good while, but if it was before your time, I guess.
I, I don't recall it unless it was something that happened, like with a building permit issue or something like that, and they just worked to move it. But I'm not aware of anything that ever came to the board requiring the moving of it or anything like that.
That's all the questions I have. Does anybody else have any questions? My only was, we did double check to make sure that we wasn't, I mean, I know you said it earlier, but that vacating the right of way ain't blocking somebody out.
It, it is not the, we, we are vacating just the, the little rectangular around them, and it's keeping the full width of the right of way. We actually have water, water line running through there. It is not any issue with our water line. We, we will have language just on it that says, you know, reserve an easy water line, just in case it happens to touch up against it. But there are, there are no issues. It doesn't block anyone else from getting in there. It just cuts this, this section out of that seventy-foot right of way.
That's all the questions I have. All right. Does anybody else have anything? All right. Here and now, I will close the public hearing portion of the right of way vacation, and I will entertain a motion to approve the vacation of the portion of the right of way on Clark Avenue as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Same move.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any more discussion or questions about the motion?
Just, just for clarification, Mr. Chairman, the motion is to adopt the ordinance to vacate the right of way.
Yes, correct.
Yes, sir.
Right. Does that lead to any other questions?
The portion, the small portion of the right of way.
Yes, that small portion. Yes, sir.
Right. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved. Move on to our next item, our payment of invoices each board member has received in their board package. Copy the invoices that need to be paid, and I will entertain a motion to pay the invoices. Have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any questions or any invoice that any board member wants to pull out? All right. Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item is our minutes from our previous meeting from December the twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Same move.
What's that exterior? Let you, Mr. Terry?
Yes, sir.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry, a second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any addition or corrections to the minutes as presented? All right. Here and now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Move on to old business. We have a burn ban modification. Mr. Hankins, I believe that you?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Ms. Chairman, members of the board. Conditions have improved. We've received a good bit of rain over the last couple of weeks. Before this past weekend, we, we had a lot of high wind that had dried a lot of the fuels out. We, we don't know what the next couple of weeks is gonna hold, but things have been drier than usual this summer and fall, so we're, we're still a little, little nervous about conditions, especially with some of the brush fire conditions that we've had. So staff recommends that instead of completely lifting the burn ban, that you authorize a modification and allow small controlled burns between four P. M. and midnight for property owners and campgrounds. We would ask that you continue the prohibition on larger scale burning. We define that as anything over ten feet by ten feet by five feet high. We'll be glad to do whatever your pleasure is, but that's the staff recommendation.
Does anybody have anything?
I, I like, I like the, the time limitations. I just ain't crazy about the size limitations, because, I mean, if you pile up a big pile of brush, it's gonna be bigger than ten by ten.
Well, I was gonna question the, the four P. M., which, in, in the spring, and I understand, I understand why the, the state usually does, does four P. M., but right here, winter, at four P. M., it starts to get dark. I'm ready to go to bed. And, and a lot of these older people that wanna burn these Christmas boxes, you know, they wanna do it while the sun's still up. That's my.
The only thing I like about the timeframe is it gives you, your volunteer firefighters.
And I understand that, but it's, you know.
More, more than likely, they're apt to have better turnout after four.
I mean, at, at this point, after the past couple of days, I don't think we have anything to, to worry about. I, I would ask that we push that four P. M. back a little bit. And if it does dry out, I mean, we can, we can come back and, and do it again. The, the large scale burning, it's, I, I agree with, with Jean. There's a lot of, there's a lot of farmers that have stuff that they've, they piled up and they've been waiting on to, to get rid of, but is there, is there any way we could separate the large scale from agriculture versus commercial sites?
I, I would defer to our attorney. I would say probably not.
Fire's a fire, yeah. Whether you're burning on commercial property or you're burning on farm fire, that's how I do it. Your board, you guys make that decision.
I know I've got a large bunch of piles of brush that solar farms have piled up, and they're dying, and they're really wanting to burn it, and I wouldn't mind. Them, you know, neighbors in that area don't want to breathe that much, you know. It's different when you've just got, you know, this fifty or sixty acres, you know, that'd be blowing all over, you know, some of them's older. And then there's several other things that I wouldn't mind seeing it left like this for a little, little bit of time, with the same, with the time restrictions and everything.
And just for the record on that information, our county engineer is working with the site developers over there. Per their stormwater management permit, all of that debris was supposed to be chipped. So they are, in my opinion, trying to take a shortcut out, and D. E. Q. did not approve them to burn it, and I think it's for.
The runoff and everything else that occurs. So we, he has been working with the state D. E. Q. to be certain that there's not been any modifications in those plans to allow them to burn that. Not to say they wouldn't go in there and burn it anyway, but they are working on that. So this would at least also provide an additional ban on that.
Does anybody else have anything? What's your pleasure? Make a motion, we can approve it as is, or make a motion, we have some type of modification? I think the time limit should be increased a little bit myself. I mean, by five o'clock, it's totally dark. And, and I was thinking like two. I mean, I wasn't, that, that was my only thing, just, I wasn't thinking wide open, but give them a couple more hours.
Yeah, I'm good with the two. I think, I agree with Jean. I think the ten by ten, it's, a lot of people's already got brush piles piled up bigger than that now, so, and they're waiting to, to burn them, so. We could look at that.
Well, I, I think the, and Mr. Farthing, I, I think what we're looking at here is the difference between the letter of the law and the spirit of the law. I don't think anybody's gonna show up measuring if you got a brush pile unless it's a ginormous brush pile.
I've got some. If I, if I like them, they're gonna, they're gonna show up.
I, I can tell you that, that the largest violation we've had of the burn ban was somebody who was clearing a house site, and they had pushed a couple of acres worth of trees up on Route ninety-four. And once it sets off, there's really not any point in, in the fire department trying to put that out. So we, we, Mr. Barnhill worked with the, the homeowner and the, the contractor to make sure that somebody was on scene and managing the fire, you know, rather than making them put that out. So, you know, we, we do try to apply some common sense when we're enforcing the restriction.
All right. What's your pleasure?
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we change it to two o'clock and make it, I mean, being a farmer, make it less than an acre.
Less than an acre?
Yeah. The size has to be smaller than an acre. That's a pretty good sized spot. That would also.
The cleared spot or the pile?
The pile.
The.
I can have a one acre pile of wood and burn.
Yeah. I, I just said that because I work in acres.
I don't know.
I mean, I was just thinking.
I've been to a couple of brush burns. I don't think I've been to one that big.
Me either. That's a big burn.
You ain't been to my house.
All right. I got a motion.
I mean, how, how else would you do it? A one acre?
I think by the time you get to safety, it's gonna be burned up.
Right. Well, I don't know about that, but.
I don't know. I, I defer to you as the fire department guy to say how you measure that pile, right? Ten by ten, twenty by twenty?
I, I.
But I think it's some kind of number you're trying to pick and control so it doesn't get too big.
I, I think, I mean, me personally, I think if we're gonna put a, a size limitation, we need to put something with feet and just so the normal, not Jean, the farmer, but some normal person can go out there and go, yeah.
Using the Tommy Duncan thing, first base, it's a third base, a baseball field, first base is ninety feet. So ninety feet by ninety feet is the infield of a baseball field. So a hundred foot, that gives you an idea of what you're looking for. I mean, I don't know if that's, like, you wanna do a hundred by a hundred, or fifty by fifty, or whatever, so.
That's fine. Well, I can change the motion to a hundred by a hundred.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Horni to change the time to two P. M., and then the size to, what was it?
A hundred by a hundred.
A hundred by a hundred. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any more questions or discussion? Right. Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next, we have our draft two thousand and twenty-four rules and procedure and meeting calendar. Is that just in place, or?
That's just for review.
We also have appointments. Those are, well, we actually do have one appointment. Ms. Ayers did resign from the With Grayson Regional. Ms. Ayers did resign from the With Grayson Regional Library Board. I believe everybody got a copy of that due to conflicts with her employment. And we do have a letter of interest from Ms. Davis. If anybody's interested, we can entertain a motion to appoint Ms. Davis to fulfill, I guess, what's that term? I'm sorry.
I do not remember if Ms. Ayers was coming off this time.
I believe Ms. Ayers actually volunteered to fill Ms. Davis's term when she had resigned because of a government, governor's appointment, so...
I've got the full appointee list. Martha printed it the other day, but I would say to fill the unexpired term of Ms. Ayers.
All right. Entertain a motion to appoint Ms. Davis to fulfill the unexpired term of Ms. Ayers on the With Grayson Library Board.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry to have a second.
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Horney. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? She is so appointed.
And I would just point out for the four members that just either were elected or returned, your planning commission members, I would ask that by the next meeting, we're having names to appoint those planning commission members. The way we have it in the bylaws of the planning commission, the ones that are there now currently continue to serve until a new member is appointed. So the planning commission will be meeting next Tuesday, I guess it is. So the current members will continue to serve until an appointment is put in place. But the rest of them, to the best of my knowledge and looking through, are not specifically to the individual board districts in the process.
Do you want them to reach out to you, send you an email if there's, if they're going, if they're going to reappoint their member, or if they're looking at appointing a new member?
They can. It'd be fine.
All right. We'll move on to reports. We have the treasurer, Ms. Gwen.
Good evening. It seems like it's been a very long time since I've been here, because I missed the meeting in November, so it's, it seems like it's been a very long time. But I hope everyone had a good Christmas and everything in between. I think there's snow may still be coming this week, so we'll see if we end up with a white New Year's, right? So in your packet, you had your November financial report, and in the consolidated account, we had a cash balance of $66,892,504. Included within that balance is $36,288,636 in the general fund. Overall, we stayed, our balance hasn't changed drastically from October, but with the collection of taxes coming in, starting end of October through November, and now with December, which I'll touch on in a moment, and even into January, we'll kind of see that balance continue to increase before it'll start changing through the springtime instead of our normal October to December seems to be our general timeframe there. With real estate bills, real estate has gone out. We received the data about three weeks ago, so we did our work on that. And I've got a file sent out to the printer service, printer mailing service last week, and we had a correction we needed to make with that, so it delayed about another day. But we did have some property owners that called yesterday afternoon. They had received their tax bill. I think some folks started receiving them today, and I look for some to come in tomorrow. But definitely, over the next two days, maybe three days, we should see that influx of those 20,000 bills coming back into the county. Hopefully, mail is really weird right now. We're receiving mail that's still postmarked back in November or early December, even over the past week. I don't know where it's been, but it's just now showing up. So things are kind of, kind of odd on how they're mailing out. But hopefully, over the next two to three days, well, one to three days, real estate bills should be out. Those are due January the 31st, as decided by the board at a meeting, I want to say back in October, I think was the date that you all had voted on for that. The other thing that I have is, as you're aware, we have relocated. We're now just next door here. We moved, for the most part, on Thursday, and we opened up in the new facility yesterday. So still working a few kinks out, kind of trying to find our new operations and things like that. Folks are still going to the old building, and as long as it's not raining, it's not too bad by the time they find us. We had a failure yesterday. He was pretty wet by the time he got to us and he found our location. So, so we're still, you know, and of course, folks don't know, even though we did put a stuffer in the real estate bills, you'll see that when you receive your bills. Mr. Baer had worked with Mrs. Dale to put something together, so we have included that in the bills. It has a picture and notes in there that there's a new location for our state commissioner's office, so we're trying to get that out there. But overall, that's kind of where I'm at. We're in the thick of taxes and trying to continue to get mail and payment box payments processed, figure out operations in the new facility, finish moving, and that's kind of where we're at with the treasurer's office right now. We're still a little, a little crazy, so to speak, I guess, but we'll get it all worked out in the coming weeks, hopefully. So does anybody have any questions or comments on that?
I had, I had one question. A gentleman called me, said that the property taxes are taxed on January 1st, what you own on January 1st, correct?
Correct, yes.
Is there a reason that we don't send out bills until the end of, almost 11 months later, or 10 months later? Is there some reason why it can't be sent out earlier than that?
They can be. And that goes back to the discussions that we've had a couple of months ago as far as changing due dates with bills and things like that. We can send personal property out sooner, real estate out sooner. That's going to be something, I guess, that we're still in discussion on. We kind of dropped the ball on it, because I think, Mr. Smith, you were part of that discussion as well. We've sort of talked about moving due dates starting in 2024, as to, because Mrs. Vaught was involved with that, as to when commissioner's office can have that data ready to be able to bill out. So it is something that can, can be sent out sooner. It's going to be dependent upon, of course, the commissioner's office completing their work, getting us the data, and when you as the board would choose the due dates for each one. So, you know, if you choose to change real estate due date or personal property due date, then earlier than December 5th, that would force the earlier send out of those.
Is that possible, Kathy? I know you're not going to be there, but...
Uh, it would be possible. Is this a bold, would it be possible?
Part of the discussion we had, and I was going to ask Mrs. Vaught to talk about which came up, we looked at several options in the budget committee meeting. Individual personal property is probably the easier one to do because we can get the, we get the, we get those. The challenge is the business personal property, which is mailed out at the same time, is not just off of the January 1st information. There are forms that the businesses and things fill out, send into the commissioner revenue's office. They get that typically by May...
It's due back in by May 1st.
So May 1st, she gets that. And then it takes them several months to work that information to go out. So like she said, when we looked at it in the committee meeting, it's feasible to back that up maybe a little bit, but it's very hard to back it up a whole lot because of the time it takes of that. I had not realized the business personal property and everything like that that gets mingled in with it. I was just, you know, we had vehicle values in March of last year, whatever. We knew what we were dealing with. The second thing is the board has to adopt the tax rate as well. So we would need to adopt a tax rate by the year. So typically, we're adopting budgets most time now at the end of June. So then they would need to run all of their paperwork and all of their calculations off of that end of June. But that is a thing the budget committee is looking at and looking at options. I thought personal property was the easy one to move back until we got into those meetings and realized how convoluted business, personal property, machinery, and tools and tax are in the process. Could potentially almost be easier to back up real estate in the process to be at an earlier date. But that also might mean the board would need to look at setting a real estate tax earlier so the commissioner revenue could start running the information. Kathy, I'm speaking out wrong here in the process, that's it. But those are the things that, during the committee meeting, that were discussed.
Yeah, and we did. We talked about real estate would, from the commissioner's standpoint, would be an easier process, just because that doesn't really change unless there's a reassessment, as long as we don't have the problems we had last year. But that's the only time you really have that change with real estate. But it would be easier to back real estate up, because we talked about moving real estate back and having it on a due date, and then within the coming weeks after that, personal property would bill out and then have a due date. That way, one, we're splitting the due dates, because folks seem to like that, but then we're also backing that up as well, or at least backing one of them up. But I don't know where discussions will continue to go or not go. I guess maybe we, we need to meet with budget committee again, or maybe rediscuss that again.
Yeah, I think...
And figure something out for 2024, because really, that's a decision that needs to be made very soon going into the 2024 tax year, because we're pretty much to it now.
Yeah, I think we need to keep that on the front burner, either for a board meeting or run it through the budget committee, let us, because I know we discussed it before, and then with the reassessment and new software and everything, but that's something that I would definitely like to see us pursue and see that come to fruition.
Yeah, I mean, just for me, I would, you know, as I mentioned before, if we're going to do it, I'd rather say it, let's get it done sooner than later, not be talking about it this time next year. So, and I think we all agreed that when we talked about it.
And two, if you decide to split the due dates, that you move it, one or the other off of December 5th, and you want to move to earlier in the year, that decision needs to start being made so the commissioner's office can complete their work. But also, we can start that, that public information thing for the citizens of, you know, these due dates are now different, and, you know, that way they're aware of where they are. And that's something, we're kind of getting a few comments right now because of real estate, where last year wasn't due until March. People are coming in and they're saying, I didn't think this was due until March, but people are telling me it's due in January this time. So we've kind of, with the things that have happened, we just have a lot of confusion going on with our citizens, that we need to get something figured out that we're reestablished, we have that set date, and that's where we're at, that we're not, we don't have that moving deadline target date. So just to kind of get a little bit more consistency about it. So, but yeah. Like I said, I guess committee just needs to meet again, or commissioner and I need to meet as well for discussions, and then that would be a board decision on those due dates.
Mr. Baer, can we get that on the next budget committee meeting?
Yes, sir.
Anyone have anything else?
Ms. Gwen, I will be sending a response to one of my constituents, and I'm going to copy you on it.
Sure.
So that if she reaches out, you'll be familiar with my response.
Sure, that'll be fine. Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right. Does anybody else have anything? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Horney, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Don't be a stranger. You get bored on Tuesday nights. I'm sure they would love to have you back as a kicker on the back row.
I got to wait till summer, so I'll have tomatoes.
Well, as they pointed out earlier, it gets dark early, so you're not really farming, probably after dark. So I'm sure, you know...
Obviously, you haven't been by my phone.
Unless you're out burning those, those large brush piles that you have that are five acres big, I'm sure they'll be glad to have you back. But thank you. Appreciate your time and your service with him. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have a commissioner, Ms. Vaught. Do you have anything to add?
I do not.
Last meeting?
I don't know.
You didn't want to talk at your first meeting, did you, Kathy? Well, again, thank you for your service, Kathy.
No, it has been, it has been my pleasure. I've enjoyed your first and then your second.
For a little while.
Yeah, for a little while.
All right. Next, we have a sheriff, Sheriff Foster.
I don't want Mr. Horney to get too comfortable. I'd like to make a presentation to you, so...
Last time a cop made a presentation, it'd cost me. He'll borrow my pen.
I'd just like to present a commendation on having myself as a sheriff of Red County, who I haven't been with the Wood County Sheriff's Office in recognition of Mr. Horney's 16 years of, I want to dedicate his service to the citizens of Wood County Sheriff's Office as well. I'm very grateful for the departmental collaboration he displayed from the board as well as the sheriff's office. And through his effort, he's enabled us to provide better pay, build the extra equipment and additional equipment to protect the citizens as well as our children and our public. This was very detrimental years ago, I think, in having police guard out front of all of our students, protect our children. I just want to thank him again for his service and his friendship, and Wood County Sheriff's Office wishes him the best in future generations, which in my hand. I thank you for all your work, thank you.
Can I step up on the steps?
You should have stayed up here, Gene.
I think if I was on the steps, I still wouldn't be as tall as you. Thank you, sir.
All right, we'll move on. Is that all you had, Sheriff? I'm sorry. All right, we'll move on to new business. We have a consent calendar that we've received in our board package. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Horney. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any questions or discussion on the consent calendar? Yeah, Parks and Recreation with Kevin Williams, that's still, where are we on that? Is he still in there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. Next, we have a memo from our finance director, Ms. Woods, requesting that we approve the third quarter budget appropriations as presented. I'll entertain a motion to approve third quarter budget appropriations.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Horney, a second by Mr. Cook. Any questions or discussion on that one? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Burnett.
Aye.
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 So approved. Next, we have AMB billing. Mr. Hankins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. If you'll recall, a couple of meetings ago, you authorized staff to work with AMB as the potential biller. They have a cooperative procurement contract with Franklin County. The contract improves on the terms that our two services are currently experiencing from AMB. They currently pay, I believe it's 6% of their gross receipts to AMB for the billing service, and that will be dropped, I believe, to 4.5% in the contract that's presented to you. Scott sent back some comments, and I've been working with the company to try to finalize those. I think if we can resolve one last thing, that we would be ready to proceed. We just would ask for authorization to authorize, or would you ask that you authorize staff to enter into the agreement once those items have been finalized?
All right. Entertain a motion to authorize staff to enter into an agreement with AMB pursuant to the county attorney's approval.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions or discussion on that one? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved. Next, we have the JPSA FY23 audit. Mr. Baer?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. You have, you have two audits, the JPSA FY23, and you also have the New River Regional Water Authority audit for FY23. I, they're basically informational purposes, but I like including them in the agenda and not just in your informational package. Not required, but you could take action just to accept the audits that have been presented to you. But both of them, you know, audits that came back without any, any issues, you know, they were the unmodified opinion, what you want, so.
Can we take action to...
I think you can take action jointly if you wanted to, sir.
Jointly. All right. Entertain a motion to accept the JPSA and the New River Regional Water Authority FY23 audits. Have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Hornet. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, so approved. Next we have our ballot recount certification. I don't see Mr. Counts here.
It's appropriate name for a registrar.
All right. Do we just need to take?
I'd just accept the result, or sort of like when you get the other results, y'all just acknowledge acceptance of it from the, from the registrar's office.
All right. Entertain a motion to, excuse me, to accept the certification as presented.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Hornet. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, seeing that it's signed by three Circuit Court judges, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. Move on to staff reports. Mr. Hankins, I believe you're first.
Mr. Chairman, I regret to say that two of the items I don't have complete, so we are going to have a shorter report than anticipated. First action item I would request, our fiscal year 24 budget anticipated that we would have lead mines rescue squad operating for a half year. For some reason, we have a full year's budget for real retreat rescue squad. But that's leading to some issues with lead mines being able to pay its bills, so I would request that you authorize a transfer of $40,000 either from reserves or from the 3204 emergency services budget to the lead mines budget and authorize staff to set that in the appropriate categories.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to transfer $40,000 from 3204 to 3231 for the lead mines rescue budget. I'll have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. Any questions or discussion on that motion?
Yes, Mr. Hankins, is that going to, how far do you project that to?
We're working toward getting things set up so we can start operating with EMS in probably late March. So really, we're anticipating that we'll need it for about three months. I don't anticipate we'll need the full $40,000, but if something were to come up between now and then that delayed that startup, I just wanted to make sure I had the bases covered.
Very well. That's all I have for you.
All right. Does anybody else have anything? All right. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved. Second action item I had was for call out pay. That's a payment that
we make to the fire departments every year for volunteers who come out and serve. Some of the departments use that to pay their members for their responses. Some use it to support the operations of the fire departments. We've been looking at the numbers. I'm not comfortable making a recommendation to you at this point, so I would ask that you indulge me in reporting that either to the Budget Committee or Fire and Rescue for further review at their next meeting.
Does anybody have a problem with that?
No, sir.
Sounds good.
Also been working with the supplier that staff has selected to work with for the Apex seating. I stressed to them that we needed to try to finalize some, some details in time for this meeting. Unfortunately, we're not able to do so, so I don't have a recommendation for you on, on the price. So I'll plan to bring that to you at your first January meeting.
Mr. Hankins, if I might just jump in here, just for informational purposes, I logged on last Thursday to buy tickets for my parents and my son and daughter to attend the hockey game, and there were only about 100 tickets left online at that time for the game last week. And at the game, they ended, they ended up selling standing room only, general admissions tickets. Now, a lot of those tickets that were sold, people did not show up, but it was the largest crowd that had been at any of the games. So it was, it was a good evening.
They're doing the, they're doing the, or they got their rental skates.
They do have the rental skate. Mr. Hankins and I were down there and I don't know, 20 or 30 people out there that day. Someone told me that, that one of the other days was 50 or 60 people out there doing the skating. So it seems to be well received.
Me and Mr. Smith, we, our schedules just keep conflicting. We're walking together.
Will you let us know so we can send?
Just for the record, I'm not built for ice.
If you all do go, will y'all please let Ms. Delp know so we can have some video?
I will come back for that meeting.
Just don't get rid of those crutches.
Mr. Smith, you don't have to go far under the ice if you're just dropping the gloves.
I'm not worried about the fall. It's the style.
It's not the speed. Anything else, Mr. Hankins?
Yes, as we move into with County Emergency Services, we're going to need to revise our mutual aid agreements with all of our adjoining localities. So just would ask for your consensus that staff can negotiate those mutual aid agreements with our adjoining localities, changing the names of the services that, that we'll be providing.
Kind of along the same avenues, the mutual aid, we discussed about the lines with Smith County since they have paid rescue in Atkins now. We need to look at that. If they're, if they're not going to, they're not going to provide funding, then.
We'll include that in our discussion. I also want to do the same thing with Carroll County. We cover, Mr. Parnell's been looking. We cover about 11 square miles of Carroll County and I received no, no support for that service as well.
Smith County's got a 74 cent tax rate. Carroll County's 60.
Was 69, I believe, maybe, maybe 64.
Ours is 51. So, yeah, if they don't pay, they can tell her the cost. No offense. I like it. Got freedom of both areas of business and business.
Yes, sir.
That's my opinion.
Would just highlight as well, that's the end of my action items for this meeting, but Henley Mountain, the radio tower is complete. We are setting up now doing the programming of the radios. We're still trying to try to, still trying to wrap that up by the end of January. That could slide, but I'm going to do my best to make sure that we don't slide very far, so.
We got faith in you.
Thank you for that.
Esther waited, Esther waited as long as she could for the radio system to work. She finally had retired. I mean.
We'll try not to let anybody else retire before we have a good one in place.
I hate Esther Lee. If I'd liked her, come. Anything else, Mr. Hankins?
Not unless anyone has any questions about my report.
So do we need to do a motion on the Carroll-Smith County negotiations?
I, if, as long as we have a consensus from you all, I don't think we need a recorded vote on that.
We'll come back to you with actual reworked agreements that you will vote on at that time.
All right. Move on to County Administrator, Mr. Barr. I believe you have a few things.
Yeah, first item, Mr. Counts with the elections and recounts and all is requesting some transfer of funds. Would request you all transfer the $10,000 that's requested.
Right. Entertain a motion to approve the transfer of $10,000 for the electoral board budget. Have a motion by Mr. Burnett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Hornet. Any questions or discussion on that one? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved.
Next item, I would request you all approve the lease agreement with Shannon Underwood for the property where we currently have the pipe stored for our lots cap water tank.
Right. Entertain a motion to approve the lease agreement with Shannon Underwood as presented. So moved. Have a motion by Mr. Hornet. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. Any questions or discussion on the lease agreement?
I do have one question, please, Mr. Chairman. Am I conflicted out? I am really good friends with Shannon and Brian.
No.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question as well. Since that's to do with the lots cap water tank that's coming through our property, am I conflicted out?
There's water, the water line that's going on his property is setting on that property now. I do not think that's a conflict.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Burnett.
Aye.
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 So approved.
Last one is a local law enforcement grant for 1756. Would request you all approve acceptance of the grant.
Have a motion by Mr. Burnett.
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. Any questions or discussion on that one? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Burnett.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
Aye.
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 So approved.
Do have one question about those for next year's consideration. I mean, these, these small ones like this, 1700, 300, sheriff often gets little ones like this. I could throw them in the consent calendar for approval because I know they're going to be approved, but I don't know, like for you, Mr. Chairman, if it's better to have them separate so you can abstain from the vote on those in the process.
I refer to the.
If you're voting as a group and it's more than something just for the sheriff's office, you can vote on.
Yeah, if it's more than what?
So if you're in the consent calendar, you're approving the.
I don't.
I just, I mean, these things are pretty much automatic and I'm just, I'm trying to look at ways of streamlining some of the board package things that we probably don't need to have a discussion on.
Gene's like now.
Gene's like, where have you been for 16 years? The rest of you all don't run on horny time.
We would have done voted on this by the time you got here. Your family. I don't have a problem with it. I don't know. Yeah.
I just think there's certain items that I think we could, we could work into that consent calendar that we just wouldn't have that. So, thank you anyway. Appreciate it. That's all I have.
Not unless there's a lot of strings attached to it. I mean.
I agree. Well, you know me, if it's got anything questionable or anything go with it, it'll, it'll go.
Anything else, Mr. Barr?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir. County Attorney, Mr. Forthing.
I don't have any report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. We have Buildings and Grounds Committee.
Yes, the Building and Grounds Committee met on December 19, 2023 and recommends the following. Number one, approve amendment request number two to the A and E service agreement for the West County office due in addition.
Right. Coming from committee, it doesn't need a second. Is there any questions or discussion on that recommendation? Right. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Burnett.
Aye.
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 So approved.
The second item is adopting resolution 2023-35 for the Mount Rogers Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Right. Coming from committee, it doesn't need a second. Any questions or discussion on that recommendation? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So approved.
And the third item is authorizing staff to negotiate a dream seat on option number one for the new bleachers at the Apex Inn.
Again, coming from committee, it doesn't need a second. Is there any questions or discussion on that recommendation? All right. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Move.
Aye.
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 So approved. Is that all?
That was all we had out of committee.
All right. Moving on to the Water Committee for one last time.
One last time.
The gentleman who speaks.
The Water Committee met on December 19, 2023 and recommends the following. The first is change, approve change order number three for the Maximeta's collection system improvement projects.
Right. Coming from the committee, it doesn't need a second. Any questions or discussion on that recommendation? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Burnett.
Aye.
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 So approved.
Second is amend and appropriate $76,300 to line item 9060-470518 to ensure having the resident project representative on site for the duration of the project.
Coming from committee, it doesn't need a second. Is there any questions or discussion on that one? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved.
And last is approving Spielman, Thomas and Battle as bond counsel for the Dunford Road Water Project.
Any questions or discussion on that recommendation? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So approved.
Mr. Chairman, if I might add just one thing, just for informational purposes, the, the Maximeta's collection system improvements is the, where they're working on the infiltration and they're working on the manholes and recoding the manholes and putting waterproof lids on ones that have been broken and everything else. Today, Mr. Hankins and I had lunch with the Water and Wastewater Committee. The, one of the treatment plant operators said that they were looking at differences last year in May when we had an inch or two of rain, what came in to this past weekend with what came in. And right now, the infiltration is probably a third of what it was before. And so it was probably a little drier, so probably it's that, but they're not finished with the project, but the areas they have worked does seem to be making a difference. It's one of those things. It's underground. It's, it's in the sewer pipe. It's something that most people will never see, but, you know, it, it saves us having a million additional gallons of water coming into the water treatment plant to be treated. So anyway, just, just want to pass along that information.
All right. Thank you. Move on to board member time. Mr. Burnett?
Yes, I got a couple of items. Mr. Barr, did you get me, Landon was supposed to check the lights at the recycling centers? Did, did we get all those checked? I know we're supposed to.
I think they checked them. I will confirm with him to make certain and let you know.
I'll have to go back to Mike's mail if you don't, Mike's mail.
Is one of those out again? Okay.
And I thank you for the email on Staff Street. And I don't know, but I know with all this rain, all the dirt roads are going to be washed out again. So if we could send a thing to be dotted, just have them road checked. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Cook? The only thing I want to say is they have a new lady out at 52 Trash Point and she is super.
Yeah.
Super.
Yeah.
She is. That's all I have. Mr. Smith?
Mr. Chairman, I yield all my time to Mr. Hornet.
Oh, is this where I get that big list after I go over?
I don't have anything. The only thing is I just wanted to thank the citizens as people for letting me serve for 16 years. And I want to thank all y'all for working with me because I know it hasn't always been fun. I have enjoyed it, but I will set it home now and hope y'all have at it.
That's all I have. Terry?
Just, Mr. Hornet, thank you. It's been an honor and a pleasure to serve here with you for these past four years. Your safety is probably much better off if you and I were sitting in the side of the building longer. But in all seriousness, I wish you well. Definitely don't be a stranger. Come hang out with us. Bring tomatoes. I love tomatoes. Just don't throw them. And other than that, Happy New Year, everybody. That's all I've got, sir.
All right. Thank you. I just have a few things to, want to thank Mr. Cook. I couldn't make the last meeting. My father-in-law passed away. I appreciate him stepping up. And Mr. Terry, because we got some of the same phone calls, he took care of them. So I didn't have to deal with it when I was, deal with that. So thank both of you. Gene, I'll, I'll disagree with you. It's not been the first time. You said it hasn't been fun and, and I disagree. It's, it's not always been easy, but we've always found a way, especially you, to have fun with whatever. You're right. But, you know, again, I will miss you. We welcome Mr. Morgan. Good luck and don't be a stranger. You'll never come back. I don't blame you. I wouldn't.
After 16 years.
I was gonna say, when I work the cattle, if you want to come help, I mean, come.
Well, you know, you said, you know, you said you were going to, to throw tomatoes and I'm like, dude, you're a beef farmer. Throw some beef. And, you know, me and, me and Gene, we've learned a lot together and throw some at Chateau Brieonne, which if you don't know what that is, it's, it's filet with a fancy name and they charge more. So you can call it what you want to. You lob some of that up here, brother. Ain't nobody going to say. So you can call it what you want, till you lob some of that up here, brother. Ain't nobody going to say nothing. But honestly, thank you, Gene. It's, until you've set up here, people don't realize the commitment that it takes. And to times that by 16 years, I'm not sure what your wife does to you at home to make you want to sit up here for 16 years. Blink twice if you're all right. But, but honestly, it has been a pleasure, and I'd like to wish everybody a Happy New Year. And on a motion from the gentleman from the Spiegel District, Mr. Gene Horni, will be adjourned.
Thank you, sir.